Meeting for the forum being present. The meeting was called to order at six thirty-one P M. tonight and we immediately convened an executive session to discuss the assistant superintendent position as successive board member. At this time, I would like to call for a motion, second to vote and the executive session and to return to the open meeting.
And we've got that.
We've got that already with the reconvene, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion again?
Second again?
Yes, second again? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, roll call.
Ms. Barry?
Yeah.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton? Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Peters? Mr. Thurber? Mr. Webanero?
Here. And Mr. Peters won't come back yet.
And, um, Mr. Thurber has an excuse to absence of.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton has an excuse to absence of.
Yes. Illness on both parts. Okay, have a motion to approve the agenda with the addenda.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Webanero, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of minutes in the November eighth regular meeting, November thirtieth special meeting as written or corrected. Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second, Ms. Graves, all in favor?
Aye.
Right. We have recognition tonight to recognize the drama club at December second and their performances of She Kills Monsters, Young Adventurers Edition. Cast featured twenty-four eighth through twelfth grades students and there were an additional twenty students involved in the group. The club partnered with Dr. Jay Pacora, chair of the SUNY Austin's Department of Theory and Dance to assist with fight choreography. Over four hundred audience members attended the three performances. Great job, job well done. Thank you all. And we didn't have anything, do we have any public comment? No, nothing on the agenda and we didn't have anything on the Peru comments. Okay, superintendents report.
So it's hard to believe we're going to talk about parent conferences, so we got to have parent conferences in November and they were, we had a good turnout on both sides of campus and, um, I think that we had some really good feedback from our parents in regards to going back to our older model where we allowed some parent conferences to take place in the evening and then the next day is before Thanksgiving. Teachers appreciated that as well and that was, uh, we were able to have a great opportunity for parents and teachers to work together. Um, we also currently are in the process of conducting a district-wide school study, um, of planning analysis of our learning spaces with our architect and, um, just, I just wanted to bring that, I did work with them just before Thanksgiving, um, going through the different types of spaces that we have in each one of our buildings and they're going to be looking at state education department regulations in regards to the size of the spaces, um, and what types of learning can happen in those types of spaces. That'll be really important information for us as we move forward in subsequent years looking at building projects, but also looking at, um, you know, is it, when comparing that particular component to another component that I'll be sharing with you as soon as this one's done, um, in regards to our enrollment and is our enrollment growing and indeed if that's happening, what kind of potential do we have in regards to renovating spaces and making spaces that different, um, or better for our students? And the other part about it is, is as you're all aware, the district did move our second grade up into the B wing over the summer, um, and it's really important when we make those types of decisions that, um, there's, there's data to support our decisions, right? And then we talk about the types of classrooms, so if we have to move people, we want to make sure those people feel, you know, they understand why, it's not just where we, the superintendent's got a crazy idea that he wants to just move people around. So I think that that's really going to help us in the process as well. Um, and I did mention, to share, yeah, I was going to talk about it here and we'll talk about it again later, um, but we're thrilled as, as a school district to have finally come to the end of our assistant superintendent's search. Shannon Pitcher Bouvier's in the back here tonight. Shannon is a New York State educator for twenty-five years, fourteen years as a educational leader and eleven as a teacher, most recent role at E H Bosse's as the director of instructional support services. Um, she co-rolled grants and she's been on many statewide committees and we're thrilled to have Shannon here. I'm thrilled that she's going to be part of our group and, um, so welcome.
Thank you. So surreal.
So, but it'll come up later on the agenda, but I thought it'd be important to talk about it here.
And we also want to thank G G.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Thank you for remem- for remembering that piece.
Yeah.
Um, Mrs. Mason will be here on the eighteenth again. Um, she and I had a conversation on the phone today and she's been a great asset to us during this period of time while we're trying, she's been helping us out in a variety of roles throughout the process, so it's, it's been great to have her here.
Right, thank you. Association of Teachers. Oh, my gosh, that would be.
December.
We're offended at being good because there's a consequence.
All right, well, things continue to go well with our regularly scheduled liaison meetings, which is nice. We continue to do our best to be proactive rather than reactive, which, um, although we can't control all circumstances, we're doing that very well, so, um, and to keep the meeting moving in an expeditious fashion. On behalf of the exec council and the members of K A T, we wish you a happy, healthy, and, uh, what's the other word? Uh, I wrote happy twice. Holiday season. Yay.
Thank you.
I'm disappointed there's no poem.
You know, here's the thing, so I know I've been pretty busy the last few days, so even though I did really try to do that today, it just didn't happen.
Well, you have plenty of time holding things and writing poetry.
That's right.
We expect something new year.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
She's writing it.
We're down to administrators reports.
So we, um, have a report tonight from our principals from three, um, three through twelve and their, their presentation on our district's data on three through eight testing as well as some regions, um, information, so, um, I'll turn it over to the principals. It's important to know that we know that Mrs. Schilt is a feeder to this, but she'll be sharing some more data with us in the future, so I don't want you to feel we're excluding her from this.
Are you okay? You're doing well.
When she runs out, her son is also in the show tonight.
Okay, that's good.
Yes, it is. Good evening, Board of Education and school community. I'm Mary Sexton, intermediate principal, and joined tonight by Jim Manchester, middle school principal, and Matt Barry, high school principal, to provide an overview of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two state testing data inclusive of the three through eight state assessments in E L A, math and science, as well as the high school region testing. Two things that we ask you to keep in mind as we review the comparative data. First, the regional scores include fifteen of the sixteen component districts inclusive of Peru. There is one large comparable district that is not included in the regional scores. We represent ten percent of the regional numbers with the remaining fourteen districts combining for the remaining ninety percent. Additionally, regional percentages do not factor in the participation rate, only the scores of the students participating are included in the percentages. So looking at the intermediate, beginning with grade three, the first thing that I'd like to highlight because it was an area of focus is we were very much focused on increasing our participation rates and I'm very pleased to share that we've increased across all grade levels with third grade hitting ninety-one percent in both E L A and math. Now more than ever, this is, this is one of our measures of where our students are in relation to the state standards and this helps to inform our instruction and to identify the specific needs of our students in relation to the standards. So taking a look at the positives with regard to E L A, eighty-one percent of our students fell within the level two and three. Um, we know that there are learning gaps that have been created by COVID that we continue to respond to. We also, uh, you know, aside, this is looking at proficiency, but we also measure growth. So we know our students are growing, um, not completely surprised that we're seeing so many in the two and three range as they're approaching, um, grade level proficiency. Um, we were the same or within three percent of the region in those area in level two and three, um, and then thirty-five percent of level two actually fell within five points of level three. An area for growth, level one is slightly higher, uh, with two percent, we're two percent higher than the region. Um, anytime we see ourselves falling higher in the ones and twos, we are looking to move all of our students towards that four. Um, math positives, we were same or within the percent of the region in levels two and three again. Areas for growth, a level one is slightly higher, uh, we were three percent above the region, that's definitely an area of focus. And then we also need to look to increase the number of our students that are scoring a level four, we fell four percent below the region. So participation in fourth grade, we looked at ninety percent in E L A, eighty-seven percent in math and eighty-six percent in science. Positives for E L A in fourth grade, fourteen percent of our level twos fell within five points of level three again. Um, areas for growth, increase our level fours, four percent, we fell four percent below the region and again, we are looking to move our level twos to threes and fours. We fell eight percent below the region in level two, so that again is an area of focus that we're addressing. Uh, we'll get to the next steps at the, at the end of the slideshow. Um, in math, our positives include, uh, level one being below the region by eight percent and twenty-two percent of our level twos fell within five points of level three. Areas for growth, continuing to move the level twos, we were eight percent above the region, so we're looking to strengthen there. In science, uh, our positive eighty-seven percent fell within a level three and four. We were below, uh, the region also in level ones. Our area for growth is to move our twos, uh, we are four percent above the region, so again, looking to move those into the threes and fours. We are also looking at, with, we will not have a science test this year, next year we begin a new test and it will be moving to fifth grade. We also, it will also be inclusive of investigation, science investigations, um, so that's an area of focus for us as well. And then lastly, but not least, fifth grade, our participation rate, eighty-one percent in E L A, eighty-three percent in math. This is an increase. We were in the seventy, seventy percentiles in previous years, so we did still see a nice jump. We're pleased with that, but we'll continue to focus on increasing that participation. Positives for E L A include level one being below the region by four percent and level three slightly higher by two percent. Areas for growth, um, and I say this because, I mean, we see thirty percent even of the region, thirty-four percent in a level one. Even though we're, we're close, it's still a high percentage to be at a level one, so that's something that we certainly will be focused on even though it's close, uh, we need to move our students forward towards that proficiency. So level two, we were a little bit higher than the region, three percent higher in level two as well, so that's an area of focus. So we moved to math, level one was thirteen percent lower than the region, level three was nine percent higher than the region and level four was slightly higher than the region by one percent. Areas of growth, same as E L A, we're looking at moving our percentages out of level one and level two is higher than the region by three percent. Thank you.
Okay, as we look at the slides for the middle school, uh, the first thing I just want to draw your attention to is participation rates similar to what, um, Mary did for grades three, four and five. I found with the middle school, it depend, the participation rate depended on when the test was taken, so in other words, E L A was the first test offered and then math, then science and you will see in all three slides, there was a decline in participation as you moved from E L A to math and then science. My assumption is students saw their peers, uh, not taking the exam and then told mom and dad, you know, hey, can I opt out as well? So it's just, uh, one of the trends that, um, we picked up on as we looked at the data. As far as, uh, grade six, you know, the highlights is that we had, uh, our grade, our level three and fours were higher than the regionals for math, which coincided with less ones and twos. Uh, one of the things that we do want to move up, uh, the level ones, we have a significant number that, um, we'd like to see move higher up on that, that chart as well. Looking at grade seven, um, this group was for the most part on par with the region. Um, we had quite a few level three and fours in E L A, you'll see that that was higher when you look at the combined percentages, um, in E L A. Even though we were on par as far as areas of growth, we want to again make sure that our math scores move up, we had seventy-seven percent that fell in that level one and two range, so those are, that's an area that we want to target to try and hopefully move higher up on the scale again. For grade eight, and again, you'll notice this gives you like the full three test scores as far as participation rates and you can see where, um, it took steps down every time the test was administered. So E L A was offered in, uh, March, math was in May and then science was also in, in June actually with the performance test in May. So direct correlation between when it was administered. Um, the students in this cohort did do well on the science exam, which was a positive, uh, but again, we're looking for areas of growth, so we want to keep our lessons on par with those next gen standards, especially in math, um, we've got to make some improvements there. Uh, we did introduce for the start of this school year, we do have a new math, new math instruction that we've, um, used for the, all three grade levels as well as in the, um, elementary, uh, so we're hoping that we'll bear some fruit with that, uh, but we also want to work to improve the participation rates as I've talked about.
So up, onto the region state at the high school level, um, I think one thing that I don't envy my, my counterparts here is that everybody has to take these exams. So the, the data obviously is, is the cohort. Um, I'd like to start out with the positives, if you look in the left column at the bottom, I, I really want to spend some time on this. Please draw your attention to level fives on the E L A exam. Half of our students who took that exam have mastery after not really having, even though they, they have the participation rate battle through COVID, you really didn't have to take the exam. Um, so these students continued to battle through and then, uh, kudos to the teachers for, um, the curriculum work that they've done. They worked hard on it, not just at the eleventh grade level, but as a team from nine, nine through, uh, twelve really. Um, the global studies exams falls on par with our aggregate both C schools for levels two through four and I think areas of growth and opportunity, after speaking with the E L A teachers, they said, you know, we'd love to see zero percent in, as an opportunity to see zero percent in level ones, uh, which I think would be a, a huge, huge, uh, goal for them and accomplishment. Global studies exam, I think it should be a focus to shift, just shift that curve and bring level ones down, fives up, uh, and everywhere in between and hopefully have that, that growth be something that is attainable. Math, um, was interesting as three, fours and fives in algebra one and two, uh, they compared with Bosse's as a whole, we have a higher percentage there, um, they're meeting or exceeding those expectations compared to our, our counterparts in the area, uh, that was a, a nice focus to have. And a lower percentage of Peru's students scored level one on the geometry exam when compared to, uh, our aggregate cohorts in the area. Um, three, four, fives, again, on par, and talking with the math department too, they would like to just, you know, as, as an overall goal, goal through their curriculum planning work, um, shift the curve, you know, and, and certainly something that they see as Science regions exams, um, with, with a shift, a few things, well, one thing to note, if you see the asterisks at the bottom, there are students at each one of those exams who have attained a level five. Uh, they, with, with the data extrapolated how it was, it doesn't meet a full data point to be registered on, on any of this. And if you look across the, the neighboring areas, it's the same for all schools. Um, our level four and five responses are on par with nearby schools on the earth science exam. Uh, living environment exam, our level three response is proficiency is half the population, so half the population is reaching proficiency. And our, our chemistry scores, uh, at a level three and four aligned with our neighboring schools as well. Um, and if, to note, our physics exam, and if you don't know the challenge behind the physics exam is, these are seniors and a lot of them have been accepted into their colleges and a lot of them have already, um, enjoyed the nice weather of May and June and won't necessarily sit for that exam, uh, but all, with that even being said, half of our students have a level four on that exam as well. So those were some good highlights and obviously, you know, we don't like to see some of those level one numbers where they are, uh, and that's been a focus of our, of our science department as a whole, aligned with the new, um, next gen standards that are coming out for science as well and more of these, um, critical thinking responses and evaluative responses rather than the rope memorization, so there's also a shift there, um, in both the exam and in the curriculum that we're delivering.
So next steps, I think, yep. Uh, so in the primary, um, and we, the reason we're including primary, primary feeds into every other level following it, it's foundational, so there is, and there has been an expansion of math intervention services in grades one and two for both moderate and high level students. Um, we are taking part in data analysis, second grade through fifth grade with, um, grade level teams with the support of our data coach. We have targeted E L A instruction in grades three and four through our walk to read program. That's inclusive of our wonders program. There are specific reading skills that each grade is working at or each grouping is working on, which also can include an enrichment and that each group is also completing weekly written responses to reading as well to continue developing their writing. Uh, we do have, the walk to read program is an hour dedicated block and we also have a half hour in addition to that and half an hour writing block for each, uh, grade level. We have, um, as Jim referenced, we have our Intermath curriculum, similar to what Matt was just reflecting on, um, we have found that the Intermath curriculum is reading heavy, however, uh, we are finding that even though there's less roped memorization with regards to our math fact fluency, um, we, there is a greater depth of knowledge that our students are able to achieve through it. Um, that being said, we still know that math fact fluency is important, so we continue to incorporate that with a specific block of time in each of our grade levels and they're utilizing Rocket Math, Math Accelerator for that. We also have, um, extended day programs that have been proposed that target key skills in literacy, math, writing and also STEAM activities.
Okay, for, um, the secondary, which is all the way to the right, we tried to again tie the district goals into our next steps. You'll notice in the first couple of bullets, the term GIST is referenced, that is a program that, uh, some teachers came up with, um, basically meaning give yourself some time. Uh, it's, ties in with our mandatory tenth period. So when we look at the, the goals on behalf of the next steps, we want to identify the chronically absent students and connect them to that GIST program, so get them to stay after, uh, for tenth period with our, our staff. We're looking to further develop, um, the middle school and high school tenth period program to address students who are failing behind or chronically absent. Uh, data, data analysis per department in the high school and the middle school, it's nice that we both have, um, department chairs in both middle and high school, we can do that now. Uh, we're going to continue to focus on reading strategies across disciplines and specific to the high school, we want to grow the grad coach program.
And then, uh, district wide across all grade levels, I think one thing that we as an administration, administrative team have discussed is that the, the goals that all of you approved were tangible, useful and can help us, um, across the board, not just putting these goals down and say, we're going to do this about these goals and we're going to do something separate about these test scores. I think it was nice, um, that we can take these, the goals that were approved and use learning targets to define our objectives, monitor and address the instances of chronic absenteeism, opening up our communication, uh, through parent square and other avenues, maximize our partners at Sweethearts and Heroes, positive school climate, connectedness, relationship building, increased attendance and engagement through those avenues, explore alternatives and creative scheduling to maximize student attention. Um, you know, hit rewind a little bit before the pandemic did hit, we were talking about these things, we were talking about different scheduling, we're talking about different start times and, um, grading policies and, and doing things a little bit differently. Um, aligning curriculum both vertically and horizontally to address our possible gaps, analyze aggregate, disaggregate data to determine where students' need lies and then obviously, um, utilizing our partners at C V E S to continue to identify our, our focus and the shift in standards, our, our learning targets and our curricular goals, uh, pre-K twelve really. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice job.
Can I have questions?
Yes.
I have just a few questions. I wrote them down, so I'm very. Um, what's grade level for three, three? You said, is that a three or a two?
Three is proficiency.
And in the eighth grade, science, was it waived if they took the regions? Does that count as?
Correct. If they took algebra or, or science, they didn't have to take the exam.
Okay, but that counts in that missing, you know, how you said the numbers got smaller? So wouldn't that count towards a percentage of the cohort or are they in a different cohort?
So, I'm not sure how it would have been captured in that data, but when it, it would be entered as a reason for not testing is because they were taking a state exam.
So that may have, in, like, skewed the percentage. That's why I'm wondering, is it skewed the percentage for participation?
It may have.
Okay. And then what, you said a five is mastering?
Eighty-five or above.
Eighty-five or above?
Yeah. They added five, they added.
So level five, what, two years ago? Okay, and then what's a three? Cause you said that was a grade level, right?
That's going to be sixty-five to seventy-five.
So passing?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That's it. See how easy that was? Okay? Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to consent agenda. We have motion to accept A through I. Motion, Mr. Mitchell? Second, Mr. Webanero, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to pose? Motion carried. Consent agenda, A through H, we have motion.
We have a denda, right?
What?
Fifteen, you have a denda, right?
Yes, I'm on fourteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carry on.
You can't jump ahead yet. It's not that long of a meeting, come on.
Challenge was one hour. Consent agenda, A through H, fourteen. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell? Mrs. Graves? All in favor? Or any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Okay, fifteen, A through K, in addition to H, and, um, the addenda, or A through L, I'm sorry, um, adopt the resolution about, uh, Mrs. Foyer? Foyer? And A, so A through L with that addition and H and then the resolution. I have a motion.
Move.
Motion, Mrs. Graves?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Yes, congratulations among the board. Should begin in January.
That would be awkward.
Okay, sixteen, hmm, I've got to make sure I'm on the right number now.
You better, you better all discombobulate.
Okay, um.
And you don't really need to act on sixteen, you can if you would like, which I do not need to.
I think we'll maybe act just on good faith of, of accepting that cost of six forty-two for our food service management service. So I have a motion to accept that. Mr. Peters, second, Mr. Webanero, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And seventeen.
All need to do each individually.
Yep. Seventeen, we have, uh, B and C on the agenda, so new mo, uh, new business A, seventeen A, the, um, agreement with cooperative extension, we have a motion. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Second, Mr. Webanero, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to pose? I'll be carried.
It's been a long road.
Yeah, I bet it has. Okay, um, and we have the resignation of our school board member on seventeen B, Mr. Thurber, as he goes on to another, uh, role in our community as a judge, so we're sorry to see Mr. Thurber leave and tonight he couldn't be here, but we thank him for all of his service and Mrs. Thurber could tell him that, he maybe watched the video, but we did thank him. So, motion to accept that?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Mr. Webanero, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And then we have, um, the resolution to, in seventeen C, that we're going to appoint a qualified person to fill the board member vacancy created by Mr. Clermore in our, um, for the January tenth through May sixteenth, um, meetings and we'll do that in January. We have a motion?
Move.
Motion, Mrs. Graves, second, Mr. Motion, Mrs. Graves, second, Mr. Webanero. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Do we have any public comment? Not, anything that wasn't on the agenda? Okay. And we don't need an executive session. Um, we've got our, we've got our budget development timetable that was in, in the report. So, Mr. Peters?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn. Second, Mrs. Graves. All in favor?
He was waiting on that.
What did Gary? Went right at it. I know, I, you know, I know what he's doing. So that's.
Your challenge for an hour, right? Thirty-four minutes, and they took up twenty-four.
Mr. Barry, that question, no, thirty-one minutes, and you took up twenty-four.
Wow.
Your reports, the admin report. Just saying.
I would like the officials to find people.
Oh, maybe it was rewind. Maybe it was rewind.